Here, here's a narrative for you. You tell me what's right or what's wrong. Okay?
Okay.
So Thailand Daniels goes out, lives in Thailand. And when it gets close to city council meeting, he flies back in so he can vote how his uncle tells him to vote. On whatever the, whatever the situation is and uh. And that's how they keep control over Jasper.
Yeah, uh.
You are listening to Not on the payroll and right here not on the payroll dot com. You can check us out at Facebook. You can check us out at YouTube. You can check us out at rumble. Hey, also check us out over at Twitter. That's exactly right. Go check us out at Twitter. And if you're looking for us and trying to figure out who we are, where we are. Just look for the gorilla with the red headphones and you'll be right on your way. We've got a interesting interview for you today with. Mister Michael Daniels. He's a councilman right here in Jasper for District Two. He is running for reelection. And he's kind of been hot topic here over the past, uh, past little while, but um. Mister Daniels, I appreciate you sitting down with me. And uh, us trying to really kind of sift through some of the details of what's going on and who you are, where you come from and the whole nine yards. So. First of all, are you, uh, are you a local?
I am.
Okay, grew up here?
Grew up here thirty-three years, in and out of town, traveling, working, but always come back here.
I got you, I got you. Well, so you're running for reelection. And you currently have, I guess, uh, I guess Mister Sample was running against you. If I'm not mistaken. So what actually got you into this? I mean, you know, you know, some people. Lose bets, some people win bets and you know, this type of deal, but you know, sometimes when you win, you don't really win. I think. I think I've had a few arguments with my wife like that, but uh. But nonetheless, uh, what actually got you into the city council pursuit initially?
Uh, I've always been heavily involved in, in politics in one way or another, whether I'm helping out with campaigns. Uh, you know, doing my own investigative journalism, um. Uh, even mostly at the federal level because you hear a lot of things on the news and it's like, okay, well, let's, let's go pull the documents out.
Right.
And let's, let's read through what's actually going on. And you know, one example was Flint, Michigan with their water issue.
Okay.
And I'm like, okay, something's wrong here. There, there's no way you have. A million people in a city and they can't drink water in the United States.
Right.
So you know, I pulled, I pulled it and I found out where the issues were. And uh, you know, when Donald Trump got elected, you know, by the time this had happened, Flint, Michigan had been. Having issues for two, three years at this point.
Yeah.
Well, people don't know this, but Trump actually allocated funds and gave it to the state. And then the state was holding the money hostage.
Interesting.
And people don't know that, but if you pull up the records. You can read all the details and actually called one of the companies who had the contract to go in and do the work for the city.
Okay.
But the funds were being held at the state level and they weren't releasing them down to the city. So you know, you, you see things on national news, but if you dig into it. You can really see what's really going on and sometimes it's, it's not anything bad. It just may be. The bureaucratic process of, of getting things moved forward.
Right, right, right. Okay.
So anyway, so yeah, I ran for city council. I was always interested in it. And a friend of mine called me one night and, and said, hey, what, you know, why don't you jump on city council? Get, get involved more in the community and you know, I've always been somewhat active.
Right.
And it's like, you know what? That's a great idea. Let me, let me go sign up and see what happens.
Right, right, right. Now, some, some people would automatically ask the question, was that your uncle who called you?
No, no, it was not him. No, it was, it was actually a friend of mine. We were in the Marines together. And uh, he called me and, and just, and because he, he always listened to me complain about. Local, state and federal stuff.
Sure.
And uh, he just said, you know, you're, you're, you're financially savvy.
Right.
And you keep track of market conditions and he's like, you know, why don't you get in there and, and. See what's going on, maybe throw some ideas around for economic growth. Yeah, sure.
So, okay, having said that. You know, some people have had a question as to what's kind of your background, man? Because I mean, you seem kind of like this. Moving target.
Elusive creature.
Yeah, this elusive. We only see you come out on the, you know, the seventeenth of March or whatever.
Yeah.
Once a year, twice a year, this type of deal, but you seem kind of elusive in a way. And uh, I guess, I guess my question for you would be what, what is kind of, what's, what's your background work wise and that type of thing? I mean, what do you do?
So I'm an oil gas guy.
Okay.
Uh, you know, when I got out of the Marines, uh. Pretty much I went straight out to West Texas, New Mexico. We'd get on the bandwagon.
Sure.
You know, they're hiring out there and at that time, you know, I really needed to. You know, getting out of military, had some mild, mild issues.
Right.
And so I needed something to keep my mind focused. And what better way to do that than go out to West Texas when you could stand on the side of the road that says, I need work. And you get hired on and you're making eighty, hundred thousand dollars a year.
That's right.
No experience, nothing, just got a heartbeat and you can do the job.
Yeah.
And uh, so it was a great opportunity for me to go out there. And get involved in the oil field. You know, I started off uh, as a lease operator.
Okay.
And uh, you know, just steadily just grew my portfolio and experience from there. And so now. Skipping. Eleven, twelve years down the road.
Right.
Uh, you know, what I do now is I am a contractor.
Okay.
I work with numerous companies. Uh, I do a lot of like three D modeling. I've gotten away from the heavy industrial construction.
Okay.
You know, more doing the front and project development.
I got you.
Uh, so you know, I may have a project that lasts me two days. It may be two months.
Okay.
So I'm always bouncing around. I may be east coast, west coast, overseas, wherever.
Right.
And, and I may just come in for a handful of days to, you know, clarify and do a quality control.
Got you, got you. So at this point, now you've been on the council for a couple of years now?
Yeah, so this is my first term and so my first term is coming to a close.
Okay.
And running for reelection, hopefully and getting at least four years in before everybody runs me off.
Right, right, right. Okay. What do you feel like, what do you feel like you've been able to? You and the council members, obviously council members change and stuff like that, but what do you feel like during your two years, what do you feel like you guys have been able to accomplish for Jasper?
Uh, we've done a lot and, and I know there's probably. We discussed earlier, uh, as far as audit goes.
Mm-hmm.
And you know, if you look at our, our budget and look at the different types of revenue that are coming into the city, uh, it's pretty, pretty healthy.
Okay.
Uh, as far as accomplishments, it's a long list.
Yeah.
Uh, there's a lot of great, all the councilmen and mayor, you know, has been a great group to work with for, for a couple of years. It may seem chaotic sometimes in meetings, but.
Right.
That's just nature of the beast.
Right.
Have a civil discussion and move forward.
Right.
Um, so, uh, you know, between the streets. You know, redoing the streets, you know, some people, they say, well, we need to fix the streets. Well, that's been in the works, but you can't just snap your fingers and go out there and fix the street.
Right, sure.
You can go and, you can go and, and, and patch a pothole, but why do that when you have the funds to go ahead? And send and start a project, let environmental do their thing, let envi- let the engineering side do their thing. It may take a year to do it, but then you can say, okay, well, you know, one mile of street is going to cost us one point two million dollars. So let's just redo the whole street because it hasn't been done, redone in thirty years.
Okay.
And it just looks like spider veins all over the road with, with potholes, you know, and we fill it in with coal patch or something.
Yeah.
Um, so it does take time. So. If you go and look at the list of all the streets that we have lined up, we did cover some of that last meeting. Uh, street, uh, streetlights, that's been a great project.
Yeah.
Uh, some of you guys probably have been driving around and noticed that things are a lot brighter. Uh, and.
I didn't notice that they were a lot brighter until I got pulled over by Jasper's finest underneath one of those bright lights.
Yeah. And you know, some people, you know, we did the project and a lot of people were excited about it. And, and it's funny because you can never make everybody happy. You know, I, I've gotten, I got three responses from it. They look great. They're not bright enough or they're too bright. So you can't make everybody happy, but. But I think it was a, a great addition for the city, uh, and, and you know, some neighborhoods have a lot of trees, a lot of coverage and they get pretty dark. And so a lot of those areas are more lit up now.
I got you.
Uh, one of the big things that I wanted as a kid.
Yeah.
Is a skateboard.
Okay.
And when they get that.
You and Rashad Lewis.
When they get that thing built, I'm gonna go grab my skateboard out. I'm gonna put a helmet on and I, and I'm gonna pray to God I don't break nothing. But I want to break that thing again, so.
That's cool, that's cool. Yeah, because I mean, it's a big project coming in. I mean, you know, I mean, does it look like everything's still on, on board? Everything's moving forward?
Yeah, yeah, uh, everything's on track, uh.
Is it still kind of in the survey side of things or?
Yeah, any, anytime you have a. I don't know how to say this. Anytime you have, I'll just say a big project.
Okay.
You know, a big project to me is, is different, but at, at a, at a city, municipal level.
Yeah.
It's different. I'm used to working industrial. So on a city level, whenever you're working with a big project and something that may come with, you know, more high liability.
Right.
You really got to have your, your stuff in order.
Yeah, your engineering better be on point.
It, it better be on point and, and some legalities and, and you know, insurance companies getting involved and so, you know. You can't go out there and put a grind rail in it, you know, especially if the insurance says, hey, we're not covering that.
Right.
Okay, so there's, there's a lot of moving parts when you, when you have a project.
Yeah.
And insurance plays a big, big role in a lot of decisions.
Sure.
You know, ultimately for the end goal of a project.
Yeah, because I mean, you know, I mean, we're, we're in such a litigation world at this point.
Yeah.
You know, I mean, it's almost like you pluck that, you pluck litigation out of the mix. It's like everything kind of goes back to old school nineteen eighty-two where you was drinking out of a water hose.
Well, you know, playground equipment, you know, you don't see those big domed, you know, things where the kids were climbing on these domes that are twenty feet high.
Yeah, yeah.
So many kids were falling and, and breaking their arms. Uh, I, it's.
I, hey, I remember some stuff I played on, on, in elementary school. It was like a death trap. It was like. It was almost like you'd go out to recess and then when you'd come back from recess, you'd realize. Who got, who got knocked off during, during recess by that machine, by whatever that deal was, you know?
It was the days when, and, and you know, I remember growing up, my parents pretty much kick us outside and say, don't come home to the streetlight.
That's it?
Or you're dying.
Sure.
You know, if you got a broken arm, well, wait a minute till we get back home or something.
You'll find your piece of wood.
Give the neighbors.
Tape it to the wood.
Yeah.
Yeah, exactly. No, I, and I never really understood that as a kid, but I understand that very much so as an adult now. You know, why, why my parents would send me off, off out into the, to the wild blue yonder to go try to figure things out, but. Now, so tell me this a little bit specific to the audit. I mean, what, how did that turn out? Because I mean, to be honest with you, it almost seems like, um. It, it almost seems like any audit you hear about, if you hear about an audit, it's normally negative.
Yeah, typ- typically what you're seeing on an audit is, and. I get, not everybody's familiar how an audit works, okay? Uh, let's say I'm going to come in and do a financial audit on your business.
Right.
Okay, and you're the business owner and you say, hey, I need everything out in the open. Um, and I've seen this in the oil field happen.
Yeah.
You know, it happens quite a bit. Well, when they go and do an audit, well, they say, okay, well, you, you have project A. As an example, you have project A and you pay this company. Four hundred thousand dollars or whatever, two hundred thousand dollars. They can say, okay, well, hey, I'm going to call that company that did that project and hey, can I get a copy of? Where that money went.
Yeah.
These are subcontractors.
Right.
And you know, and they can go down, all the way down to the bottom rung of who received that money.
Sure.
And then where that money went from there.
Yeah.
And so on that, uh. I don't think anyone posted the video of the auditor that stood up, but you know, the city got an A plus rating. Can't get better. Squeaky clean record, no issues, no questions.
And who was the auditor?
Uh, I'd have to.
Some third party?
It was a third party.
Okay.
And there, I think they're at a, uh, Austin.
Yeah.
And that, all they, they specialize in looking at municipalities and I'm sure some, they do some private companies.
Right, right.
But you know, and they can't like.
That's what they specialize in.
That's what they specialize in. And they, they look at the numbers.
Okay.
And they say, okay, well, so and so got this, well, where'd it go? And they follow the dollar all the way down to the lowest person.
So the accusation of impropriety or corruption or something along those lines, you normally can find those in an audit.
You can find those pretty quickly, uh, you know, if, if there is corruption going on.
Do you believe there's corruption?
No, I don't know how anybody would be able to do it. Before I got in the council, that was another thing. Before I got in the council, okay? I was pretty judgmental and I was critical of just government in general.
Okay.
Okay, I just.
It's, it's kind of easy to be that way.
Yeah, and you know, I, I had, I was skeptical.
Yeah.
But it's like, okay, well, you know, I can do requests for information and pull public records, which I was already doing that anyways, you know, on the federal and states side.
Right.
But the city side, you know, I wasn't really too involved with looking at the city.
Yeah.
I just figured, oh, okay, well, it's been like this for years, but you know, now that I've gone in here and I've probably dug and, and. People that work for the city, they're probably ready to get rid of me because of all the questions and information that I've pulled and documents that I've gone over.
Right.
You know, with my own research and, uh, investigation and, and talking with third party audit companies that come in. If there is fraud, by God, you gotta be a genius to.
To pull it off.
To pull it off.
Yeah.
I mean.
Do you, do you believe there are any geniuses on the city council? Because I mean, honestly, it's like this ongoing, it's like this ongoing saga of, of, uh.
Accusations and things like that, yeah.
Yeah, it's just a lot. I mean, it, it never stops. It's kind of going, going back to the lighting situation. It's like, you know. Some people like it, some people hate it. Some people think, you know, I mean, it's a good, good resource. Some people think it's horrible. It, it's just like an ongoing, it's like a domino is what it had, what seems to be like these accusations. These accusations specifically about corruption in, in Jasper, in the city of Jasper. I mean, it's just.
Yeah, it, it, as soon as there's an accusation, it spirals out of control and, uh. You mentioned earlier before we started this, you're, or even during, you said elusive. You know, it's funny because when I hear a rumor. Uh, I laugh because I usually add on to it, especially if it's about me.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
If it's about me, I'm just like, you know, okay, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, someone's, you know, someone may say, well, he was drinking alcohol and, and had, uh. MVPs and he was getting wasted. Well, people that know me know I really don't drink alcohol.
Yeah, if I'm only getting wasted, I'm not going to do it out in public. It's too expensive.
It is too expensive.
What are we talking about?
But you know, I'll socially drink, but you know, they're saying something like that. I'll say, well, what you didn't realize was I was actually doing illegal substances at MVPs too. And then I just let it get out of control because it's just.
Yeah.
People run with it and, and it usually comes back to me and I'll laugh because it's like, how's this even realistic?
It's kind of like, it's kind of like the, uh, the alcohol ordinance.
Yeah.
Okay, the alcohol ordinance kind of started this snowball effect. And next thing you know, you know, the city of Jasper is sanctioning, uh, you know, uh, heroin handouts at, at little booths.
Yeah, we're passing out crack pipes and everything, you know.
You know, and I'm just like, where, you know, I. There's only a couple of lawyers that I've seen look at the, look at the, the, uh, language of the ordinance.
Yeah.
And they, you know, I mean, granted, there was a question as to whether or not the, the, uh, the local city attorney. Was able to see any of that before it came out to the, to the floor and all this and then. Question of whether or not, you know, who put this together and how did it get passed and all this stuff, but it's almost like these things take a life of its own.
It, yeah, so, so there was something I said yesterday that. I wasn't concerned with necessarily. I, I agree with it to, to a point, but when you're in a profession. Um. Engineering.
Okay.
Legal, medical, okay, it's all, it's all a practice.
Right.
Okay, uh, you've been in oil field, I've been in oil field.
Right.
We've been in various aspects of the oil field.
Sure.
But you know, one of the old sayings in the oil field is no matter how long you're in the industry, you'll never know everything.
That's right.
Uh, you know, when you, when you go to a doctor.
Right.
A doctor may specialize in, you know, E and T, ear, nose, throat.
Right.
They don't know about what's going on on the foot.
Yeah.
You know, so I'm not saying this is the case with the city, okay? Because you can have a general practitioner. Like a general physician who kind of has a broad concept of the entire body. Like you can have a lawyer that has a broad concept of municipality, but when it comes to certain regulations. Uh, you know, that's why the federal government has, you know, we have the FBI, we have the ATF, you know, there's. Different divisions that specifically focus on.
Right.
Certain things.
Right.
Uh, so it never hurts to get a second opinion. You know, we do use, the city does have multiple sources as far as, uh, legal advice.
Right.
Uh, so it never hurts and, and me, just me as a human being. I don't get on Google or I don't ask a friend their advice. I like to go get at least a second opinion. And if I have to pay for the professional opinion, then I'll go out and pay. So as a city, making some decisions that may be tough. I, I want the city to get second opinions on things.
Right, right, right.
You know, and it may seem somewhat controversial to the public depending on how the narrative gets put out, to, put out to the public.
Yeah.
Uh, but you know, Mister Atcliffe does a great job, really, really enjoying, get along with him really well. Uh, really intelligent man, uh, but some things. And you know, on the alcohol thing, I'm not a big supporter of it. Didn't, did not evolve. I wasn't even at the meeting. I was driving back in town trying to make the meeting. I just quite couldn't get here in time.
Yeah.
Um, so you know, and, and as far as that, hey, let's get some second opinions.
Yeah.
And you know, if there's, if there's maybe. I don't want to get off too deep in, but you know, you have federal government. You have the state, you have counties, you have cities. Sometimes you gotta push back from the bottom. You know.
Yeah.
States want to legalize marijuana, they push back against federal government. Still legal, it's still illegal at the federal level. But the states, I wanted it passed it. Uh, you know, even the state of Texas has some things that are legalized.
Right.
Even though at the federal level, it's illegal.
Right.
You know, it's just all about enforcement and so there's give and take from top to bottom.
Got you. So having said that, I mean, you know. Uh. You know. There's part of the elusiveness, part of the, uh, the accusation of elusiveness. Uh, has, has garnered you the moniker.
Yeah.
Of Thailand Daniels.
Yeah, yeah.
And so, you know, you, you basically fly in, here, here's a narrative for you. You tell me what's right or what's wrong. Okay?
Okay.
So Thailand Daniels goes out, lives in Thailand. And when it gets close to city council meeting, he flies back in so he can vote how his uncle tells him to vote. On whatever the, whatever the situation is and, uh. And that's how they keep control over Jasper.
Yeah, uh, that's good.
Any truth to that?
Heard that, but I didn't hear it in that context.
Any truth, any truth to that?
No. Uh, okay, so do I go to Thailand periodically? Yes, I, I do go to Thailand periodically.
Why is that? I mean, because you know, I, I go to Louisiana, but I don't have, I don't go if I don't have to.
Well, yeah, I, I try to, you know, people ask me, they're going to Denver and, and I travel so much that I just like to sit at the house. With the lights off in a dark room and complete silence.
Okay.
And.
All right.
And, uh, so for those that know me personally, they understand what I'm doing.
What the dynamic is?
Yeah, they understand the, the chaos.
Okay.
Uh, you know, I've always traveled. I, I don't think I can ever just sit down and not do anything. I, I need to be on the road. I need to be talking, uh, having meetings and looking at, uh, different business proposals and whatever. Um. You know, I can't sit in a room with my walls. I'm going crazy.
Uh, now, some people would question you saying that because, I mean. Hell, it doesn't seem like you could be over, what, twenty-eight years old?
Yeah, yeah, so that's.
Twenty, twenty-eight, maybe twenty-seven?
It's a blessing and a curse too, so. Uh.
How old are you?
I'm, I'm thirty-three. I'll be thirty-four coming up pretty quick.
Okay, there you go. Knocking on thirty-four.
Yeah, and, uh, it, it's, what's that old Harrison, Harrison Ford saying? It's not the. It's not the age is the mileage or something.
Sure, sure.
So, no, anyways, back on Thailand. So my wife and I, we're coming up on ten years of marriage.
Okay.
Okay, uh, people wonder how we met. I met her in New York City.
Okay, nice.
And I was working in New Mexico and people that worked out in New Mexico knows there's not a whole lot of. Uh, turf out there to run around and it, it's man camps and that's about it.
That's about it.
So anytime I had free time, I'd get out of town and, uh, met my wife in New York City. Always want to go to Big Apple. And, uh, if you go to New York City, actually I got these boots on right now.
Okay.
Don't go in cowboy boots.
Okay.
Uh, I walked all of Central Park in these boots that I got on right now and, uh. I was hurt.
Yeah.
That was, that was, that was definitely a, a trip there.
Sure, sure.
And, uh, anyway, so we, we got married, had our first child. Uh, my wife is from Thailand. She was going to school here.
Okay.
And, uh, she was working on her masters and, uh, really intelligent girl, uh, love her to death. And, uh, just like any marriage though, you know?
Right.
And, uh, anyway, so what people don't realize is we've had property in Thailand for a long time.
Okay.
Okay, uh, it was off in the mountains, more like a rural setting. You know, we could talk about building a, uh, home over there. It was like an investment, rented out Airbnb.
Okay.
And a lot of people go there for agricultural tourism.
Sure.
Uh, there's a lot of international medical, uh, facility there, so.
International missions work.
International missions is a really big one there, uh, and, uh, so you know, you have all sorts of people flying into that region where we had the property.
Got you.
To, uh, do anything from medical research to mission, mission work.
Okay.
Uh, and, uh, so we always wanted to build and, uh, we always spend about three months out of the year. Just to spend time with our family, uh. You know, and if, at best, if anything, her family would come here, we'd, we'd get everybody flying in.
Right.
And, uh. And, uh, it's, it's funny because when people think about the United States, they don't think about Texas. They don't, you know, they think Texas is a desert.
Right, right, right.
But they think about New York City, Chicago and LA. They don't think about anything in between.
Right, right.
Uh, and they don't realize how big everything is. So when they come in, they're like, well, hey, let's go, let's go to Washington for the weekend. I'm like, it's going to take the whole weekend to drive there. And, uh.
I was talking, I was talking, not to cut you off, but I was talking to a missionary when, when I was younger from Romania. And the husband had been over, had been to Texas, but the wife was scared because she was scared about the Cowboys and Indians.
Yeah, yeah.
And like, this is nineteen eighty-four. You, only Cowboys you got to worry about are Dallas Cowboys and they're probably not going to do that well. But it was funny, just the, the international concept of Texas, specific to, you know, specific to these, these old ideas, you know?
Yeah, and you know, even, even to this day, you know, a friend, friend of mine said he was going to Philadelphia and he's from, he's from the Netherlands.
Okay.
And his wife didn't want to go. She was terrified because we, um, fire arts in the United States.
Right.
And that's a foreign concept to them.
Right.
Uh, you know, they think we're just raging maniacs that go around shooting people.
That's right. Because that's all you hear.
Yeah, that's all you hear on the news that you don't, you don't hear about all the statistics and, and actual numbers. But, um. Anyways, but yeah, you know, in Thailand, you know, we spend, we've always spent quite a bit of time over there. We've always had property.
Right.
Uh, during COVID, we're able to go. So you know, for two and a half. Realistically, probably three years. My wife didn't see her family.
Yeah.
Uh, you know, we'd FaceTime or, or use Facebook.
Yeah.
To video chat with everybody. Um, but it's tough, you know, uh, you know, people. I hear all the time, America's number one. Everybody wants to come to the US.
True.
For the sake of patriotism, okay, yeah.
It's debatable.
It's, it's debatable though.
Yeah.
Uh, you know, there's pros and cons for every country you go to and, uh, you know, my wife loves the United States. Um, but going from big cities and, you know, going to Tokyo and, and. Berlin or, you know, big popular destinations, you know, off the top of your head that you think of. And then she was in New York City and I brought her out to, uh. Lovely New Mexico.
Right, right, right.
And then brought her to, uh, Jasper was a bit of a culture shock.
Well, it's also a good way to figure out whether or not she's going. Well, it's also a good way to figure out whether or not she's gonna stick with you.
Yeah.
When you take her over to New Mexico, it's like the armpit of the, of America.
It is, it is.
Then you bring her over here.
And you know, there, there's been a different, there's been some cultural uh. Differences uh, that do, you know, I was, I went to the Cowboy Church the other day.
Okay.
And uh, I actually just finished up uh, a few seminary courses.
Okay.
At a university and uh, you know, one of the, the things in there though was, you know, as a Christian, man, you lead your household.
Sure.
With those values.
Sure.
And you know, I hear that in church also, you know, and it was kinda a coincidence the other week that this happened. And I was thinking, yeah, you know, that's one of the, it's not a conflict, but being from the opposite ends of the earth. And two different, you know, religions.
Right.
You know, really, the, the foundations and the principles of Buddhism and Christianity are just about the same.
Kinda hold together.
Yeah, and so it, it's, there's, there's differences.
Yeah.
But you know, I, I don't wanna turn this into a marriage, you know. But you know, yeah, there's, there's uh, there's differences, but you know. I, I see people here get divorced all the time and that, that's their business, but it's like, you know, did y'all sit down and talk?
Yeah.
Well, no, well, did y'all work out your differences? Oh, refuse to, well, why? You know, sit down with your spouse and.
Sure.
And work out your differences, and sometimes there actually be sacrifices made on one side.
Right, right.
And so with this whole Thailand thing that people are talking about, you know, during COVID. We. I don't know if, I don't know if we just got tired or, or what, but I got to a point, you know, we wanna build our own house here.
Right.
You know, we, we had a house uh, on Hunterwood, we did a lot of remodeling on it, but at the end of the day, it's like, this just isn't what we want.
Right.
And with uh, and for those that keep track, the real estate market went absolutely bananas.
Sure.
So to be able to sell a house for a price that we were able to get for it, why not go ahead and invest? So we purchased a home in Phuket, Thailand.
Okay.
Not far from the beach, it's number one destination for vacation in, in Asia. And so it's a great investment.
Yeah.
You know, since, since we purchased it, we've been asked five times to either be bought out or rented out.
Right, right.
For. Good amount of money.
Right, sure.
And you know, there's always so much land in that country.
Okay, so let me ask you this, do you feel like? Do you feel like it's a fair cha- characterization for people out here? Who, who say if, if his, you know, if, if Daniel's. Intention is to move to Thailand at some point. Why is, you know, why, why doesn't he just resign his seat?
Yeah.
Why doesn't he resign his seat? Because in the long run, you know, it, it seems like you're kinda playing a loophole a little bit.
Yeah.
And the loophole is basically, you know, if I'm a, if I own a business here in Jasper, right? The way the documentation's written thus far. To maintain a residence in Jasper. The qualifications of what's referred to as a residence could be me moving a couch. To my place of business and calling it a residence.
Yeah.
As opposed to being here full time, there's, there's that characterization, so what do you say to that?
Yeah, so you know, being here full time, he- here's the thing, if I could, if I could work in Jasper. And afford. And see, I knew, I knew a lot of this, that people are digging about personal life, I told you before we started, I'm fairly private individual.
Right.
I don't go around and just blab.
Right, right.
And, and do things, uh, people that know me, they, they know the dynamic.
Right.
Uh, you know, the citizens want someone that's here twenty-four, seven and. You know, they, there was an article the other day that said I missed, I was only at ten out of twenty-four meetings or something like that.
Yeah.
You know, that's not really the case, you know, I can go back and pull all the records.
You think those numbers are nuts?
Those are way off.
Okay.
You know, if you look at, you know, so for the city council, you have monthly meetings.
Hmm.
Okay, then you have special call meetings, special call meetings means we're doing a workshop, we're doing something that, you know, if we're trying to figure something out.
Okay.
We can get it to the, the next month of the, the main meeting.
Gotcha.
So special call meetings may just be something, I, council's trying to figure something out.
Yeah.
So we can get it on the meeting.
Okay.
For the main monthly meeting, so being at a special call meeting, great.
Yeah.
That's, you know, you can be there, great, if not, A, it's no big deal.
Right.
Cause I hate to, I hate to admit it, the government can run without politicians. So there's no, if, if everybody just didn't show up to a meeting for a year, I said, you know, it's still gonna be here, this place isn't gonna burn down. Cause you have people here that actually run the city.
Right.
And they make majority of the decisions.
Okay.
You know, council votes on different things. Because we have our own role.
Right.
But city's gonna be here regardless of whether we're coming to meetings from, so on the special call meetings. Yeah, I'm not gonna make every special call meeting because I don't know when they are.
Okay.
You know.
Cause they're special called.
They're special called, they may.
Random.
I may be in Colorado for a week or two, working on a project and one of the other council members.
Hmm.
Gets another council member to sign a piece of paper saying, we're doing a special meeting.
Right.
Okay, well.
You're in Colorado.
I'm in Colorado, I, I'm not gonna leave to come back in two days.
Right.
When I'm in the middle of a project.
Gotcha.
Now, monthly meetings, yeah, you know, ninety percent of the time I'm gonna show to those.
Okay.
You know, but.
Fact checking, ladies and gentlemen.
If need be, I'll pull all the records and I'll tally up the eighty meetings that we've had over two years. You know, and.
Well, I just say, I think this, I think what happens is sometimes, you know. There's, there's the narrative and there's the truth and you know, if you. You know, I, I don't feel like it's completely unfair to say if, if you believe that, I mean, cause thi- this is really probably a good question. Um, do you see your future? Being here in Jasper?
My future as of right now, yes.
Okay.
But you know, that's the point, if the citizens want someone here, that's gonna be at every single monthly meeting, every single special call meeting.
Right.
And have a hundred percent attendance record, which no one in the council has.
Okay.
Okay, nobody has.
Right.
You know, just a few documents from the other day.
Sure.
I had off the cuff that was sitting next to my desk.
Right.
I was digging through it like, wow.
Yeah.
There's actually a substantial amount of missed meetings by everybody.
Yeah.
Not just.
Right.
Me.
Sure.
You know, because of special call meetings, again.
Right.
You know, they're for a discussion.
So if the people want somebody who's a hundred percent?
If you want someone that's a hundred percent, you're not gonna find it.
Yeah.
Uh, you know, if you want someone that's a hundred percent inside of the city limits of Jasper.
Right.
You're gonna be able to find it. But, but you know, then that's who you need to vote for.
Yeah.
You know, uh, you know, I'm, at times I get somewhat vocal.
Yeah.
And people get upset because they think I'm a, I'm a butt.
Right.
Well, if you think I'm a butt, that's great, go, go vote for the person you wanna vote for.
Right.
But you know, I just, I wanna tell it like it is, I'm the average kid here in town, I'm not. Some demon spawn that just popped up out of the, you know, graveyard or something.
Right.
Dragging up here like a ghoul.
Sure.
And running for council.
Yeah.
Uh, and I'm not gonna smile and, and. Do the political campaign stuff.
Yeah.
Like what you see on, on congressional runs.
Yeah.
That's, it's not realistic.
So when, when it's referred to as holding or maintaining a residence here. Uh, I think specific to those, the, that documentation, how that's written.
Yeah.
What is it referring to?
Referring to is.
As far as you're, as far as.
Yeah, so if, so for permanent residents, you know, where you lay your head down at night.
Right.
Like six months or more out of the year.
Right.
Is your place of residence.
Okay.
It could be on the street corner over here on.
So you could basically be a homeless person.
Yeah.
And you know, declare that you're at the corner of Houston.
Well, you have to have an address or something.
Well, sure.
But yeah, I mean, you can't just put a park bench at, you know, off Main Street.
Okay, so there are stipulations.
There are some stipulations there, but you know, you know, my, again, I guess since everybody's curious about my personal life. You know, my parents were recently divorced.
Okay.
Okay, they've been married for five thousand years.
Okay.
And so.
Sure.
And they just had a, you know, things happen.
Right.
And so, um, you know, my father, they, they had a house here in town, there's six bed, four, five bathrooms in it.
Okay.
So one man lives in a six bed, four or five bath house by himself.
Okay. There's your residence.
There, that, yeah, that's where I'm living because right now I'm in between a life change. Of selling my house, letting my wife and kids spend time with the other side of the family.
Right.
On the other side of the world until we get.
Till you figure out where your permanent residence is gonna be.
Well, till we figure out what we're gonna do, are we gonna build inside the city limits or are we gonna build outside the city limits?
Is it your plan to stay here?
Yeah.
Okay.
Our, you know, our plan is ultimately to stay here.
So this is basically, this is basically just from what I'm hearing, correct me if I'm, I'm, I'm mischaracterizing this. From what I'm hearing, you are in, you are married to a lady who is international.
Yeah, immigrant.
She's an immigrant and in order to. Can, obviously continue the relationship she has in, with her family in Thailand, there is some juggling that has to go on.
Yeah, there's sacrifices that need to be made to, you know, and I want my, I want my children to be engaged with their grandparents over there.
Right.
I want them to learn the culture.
Okay.
You know, I, you know, you know, with a dual citizenship, I want them to be able to maintain uh. Lifestyles in both countries and have a cultural understanding.
Right.
You know, uh, you know, having dual citizenship is a privilege for one.
Sure.
But it's, it's pretty vital, uh, and it can be financially uh, rewarding to do that.
Yeah, yeah, so but you, you can understand, you can understand on some level. The concern where we look up and he's in Thailand again, or he's off traveling again or whatever. It's almost like, it's almost like, does he, does he really? You know, where's the care if, if there's all these days that's missed, right?
Yeah.
And so not to continue to beat this dead horse, but you know, I, I think there's a, a little bit of validity of. At least communicating to some of those accusations, like with, with you staying there at your dance. Now that you've communicated that, that makes complete sense.
Yeah, well, you know, there's a house in the front, there's a house in the back.
Yeah.
You know, and years ago before we bought our house that we just sold.
Right.
You know, we were looking at, if, if you go back on MLK and go on the backside, it, MLK turns into County Road. Don't remember what it is, but it's MLK back there.
Right.
You know, there's twenty acres and we looked at going in and putting a driveway in there and building on the back twenty. You know.
Yeah.
And, and have a, it's right on the city limits.
Okay.
But we're still inside.
But you're still inside the city limits.
Yeah, and actually that land in the back, you know, I have leased.
Okay.
So it's actually leased under my name.
Okay.
And uh.
Okay, well, I mean, you know, like I say, I mean, you know, my, my objective is not a witch hunt. But at least, at least present some things because I mean, to me, it does make sense, you know, some people may look at the uh. And may look at your opponent and go, you know, that's, that's the type of tenants that we're looking for. And that's the type person we're looking for and this type of deal, you know, and so, you know, that's kinda where democracy comes in, you know, and I'm a huge proponent of letting the people speak. And so, you know.
And you know, on, on, on the reelection, you know, there's, there's a lot of people and I'll just say in my age group. That uh. Regardless of whether they like me or not, you know, they were thinking about running and I was super excited. Cause it's like, hey, great, finally getting the youth involved.
Yeah.
Uh, but you know, there's a lot of, I'm not knocking anybody.
Right.
One of the issues is the constant bashing going on in town.
Okay.
Okay. I, I don't need to name any names.
Right.
Or organizations.
Right.
But when you. When I travel, people say, well, where are you from? I tell them. Well, when you Google Jasper, Texas.
Sure.
It pops up a variety of things, but you can just go down a list.
Sure.
If you want, but you know, news media, James Burge Junior and I was discussing the other.
Right.
The other day, uh, and they go, man, what's going on with your town?
Sure.
And you know, most of the time I don't tell people I'm from Jasper.
Yeah.
Because they're gonna Google it and they go, oh yeah, that's where this happened and then, and then, you know, they see all these articles about uh. You know, accusations and they're like, man, your town screwed up.
I tell people I'm from Bonweir.
I, I just tell them I'm from Houston most of the time and, and leave it at that.
Yeah.
And uh, I'd say I'm on the outskirts of Houston.
Yeah.
Uh, but you know, there's, there's a level of accusations and this constant negative narrative that's constantly being pushed out. And it's on the web.
Right.
People look at it.
Right.
You know, people travel and they say, hey, where are you from?
Right.
Oh, Jasper, what are y'all doing up here? Oh, we're going snow skiing.
Right.
And then they see, but they see the negativity and it's just constant over and over and over again.
Sure.
So when you have that negativity in the community, uh, a lot of people, especially my age group.
Right.
You know, people say the millennials and Gen X or Gen Z, whatever you wanna call them.
Yeah, whatever.
Yeah, whatever, they're always on, on Facebook and, and getting their personal business, not all of them do that.
Yeah.
You know, and if you look at a lot of people here in town.
Right.
You'll see some that do that and some, but, but a lot of people that would be potentially good or great candidates. For a city council role, economic development, um, council, you know, something of, of public service.
Right.
It'd be great for it, but the number one thing I hear is they don't wanna come jump in this position and just get the spotlight. Put on them and just bashed for two years.
Right.
Just because they're in that position, not because who they are, but just because they're in that position.
Well, let me ask you this, do you believe, you know, you know, obviously, you know, everybody would have to be completely. Under a rock to, to not know who, who we're talking about here. You know, with the current local media, um, specific to KJS, to me. Do you believe, well, I, I guess this is my question for you, do you believe there's a certain level of accountability that media? Local media should hold on, on elected officials?
Yeah, yeah, I do, I think, I think local media and I think just regular citizens, you know, should do their own due diligence. With elected officials, doesn't matter if it's uh, at the lowest level where we're at.
Right.
To federal government.
Right, right.
You know, there's, there's, there's.
There should be involvement.
This is like a two hour conversation I'm going to, because.
Yeah.
The federal, state and on down, it's, it's totally different.
Right.[1654.77] Right.
You know, it's not like we have some hierarchy like we're a communist country where we'll report to Joe Biden and
Right.
And say, yes, sir, we'll do this.
Yeah.
Uh, it it's totally different entities.
Sure. But at the same time, you know, it it it's almost incumbent on local media to do what they can to try to hold people accountable and you know, a lot of this, oh, you know, I I don't know exactly. Um, you know, K G S has been trying to hold people accountable for years, you know, uh, at the same time.
I just don't know if they're trying to hold them accountable for with accusations.
I got you.
They're say something and it's like, well, it's like, what do you mean? We're doing an audit every quarter.
Right.
And we're not finding anything.
All right, so let me ask you this then, because I could tell you this, cause I was on the, I was on the other other side of this. Uh, I feel like the other side of the table as it pertains to um, as as it pertains to the broadband issue.
Yeah.
Broadband came in, that whole idea came in, and then, you know, street talk out here, you know? And street talk, street talk, but sometimes you get the truth. Jesus is walking around out here on the street, I'm listening to the street talk, you know what I'm saying? And so, but at the same time, you know, it, the the word comes out that your uncle, yourself, family members, you know, properties were involved in all this stuff, potential of leases to Kramer and this type of thing. This is all coming out from some of Kramer's employees.
Yeah.
And I'm sitting here going, dude, it kind of goes back to what you said earlier about corruption.
Yeah.
If you're gonna be corrupt, how you would have to be a wizard to pull this off. At the same time, knowing that we don't have any wizards on the city council. And we've got some smart folks, don't get me wrong, but I don't think anybody's in line, you know, at Harry Potter's Academy.
No one up there's a financial uh engineer that could, that could, you know, pull a fast one.
But at the same time, you know, the idea of, you know, this one's pushing for this and this one's pushing for this. And these are really the back deals that's actually in place that's gonna happen if Kramer comes in in into the mix. And so, you know, going back to one of the questions I asked to the mayor, you know? You know, Debbie Foster actually, you know, according to the story, caught you guys in a back room meeting.
In a public place.
In a public place, but it was a back room, you you guys were by yourself, you and I think your uncle and and the mayor.
Yeah.
And so, bring some context to some of this because to me, from my angle, if I I listen, I've been around oil and gas deals.
Yeah.
Okay, I know companies and I ain't naming no names.
Yeah.
And I I I wasn't even, I wasn't even there, I'm just gonna say that much, but I know situations where certain contractors are used because of the delivery of large John Deere tractors to to some D S V's piece of property.
Yeah.
It's not very difficult to get into fraudulent activity or even even a situation that's questionable.
Yeah.
It's not difficult and you know that being in oil and gas, cause oil and gas has been led by corruption.
It has, it, yeah, oil and gas, there's.
I mean, you go back to Old Man Murphy, you know what I'm saying? You go back to, there will be blood, you know? Corruption has made the oil and gas industry.
Yeah.
At the same time, so so for the for the common man out here to sit here and listen to some of this stuff going around out on the street, it's not hard to put A, B, and C together.
Yeah.
And then go, well, hell, if, you know, if Kramer comes in, you know, David Schultz is gonna lease his property and Daniels is gonna go to work for him and these guys are going to work.
I did hear that one, I was, uh, well, the one I heard was I was gonna go work in Tyler, Texas for Kramer, something internet company.
Okay, I don't know about the internet company, I know about the well, water well company.
Oh, yeah, that's what it was. Water, I was going to Tyler, Texas to work for a water well company. I don't know nothing about a water well, first off.
Well, first of all, that that that's interesting you say that, because Kramer is actually a water well drilling company.
So they have.
That has expanded into some of this infrastructure work.
Yes, so, yeah, that's the funny.
When you go to their website, it looks like we're gonna hire Van Water Wheels to come down here and do this.
Well, yeah, so so on Kramer, uh, you know, they have contracts with A T and T.
Sure.
Verizon, all the big companies.
Okay.
Uh, the company originally, I don't know, I think their website says something like nineteen fifty six or the water well company.
Okay.
Okay, uh, and then they opened another company.
Okay.
That did not have a website.
Like a sister, sister branch.
Yeah, like a child company, something like that.
Gotcha.
And and most business owners, you're never gonna have all your eggs in one basket.
Right.
You know, anyways Kramer themselves though, th- they had contracts, they were doing these big projects.
Right.
You know, I did do, I actually found a flow chart, I was passing around town, that was made by somebody and I'm sure you saw it.
Meh.
Yeah, it was like tied to Chevron and a bunch of other stuff.
Sure.
And and somehow it was tied to Chevron and from Chevron it came down and then it was tied to Renzer, it was, it was like a spider web.
Yeah.
And, you know, you're talking about, you're talking about drilling for fiber versus drilling oil and gas, that's, that's.
Two different worlds.
Two different worlds, totally. There's, there's no connection. And uh, anyways, when I saw that flow chart, I, it was I think I took a picture, I think I saw that picture on my phone.
Do you, do you, do you understand that, or or can you see the sense in this being the street talk out here and everybody going, hey, man? Because honestly, whenever they told me point blank, they said this is just a construction contract, cause whenever I was sent the contract, I mysteriously received the contract.
Yeah.
And started reading through it.
Public information.
Right, well, so I'm sitting here looking at the contract and I'm like, this is just a construction contract.
Yeah.
Just to put in the infrastructure and this does not tell us who's gonna be manning this account.
Correct.
And so out of that, you know, and then everybody's acting like children are dying in the streets because we don't have broadband internet. People are bleeding out.
So if you look at, and and I think this is one of the things that when the narrative is gonna have control, cause they were saying, well, reach out to Councilman Nardan, they're they refuse, well, I never got a phone call.
Okay.
I I have their numbers on my phone, say.
Who is this?
Well, K J S was reaching out, saying they were reaching out to Councilman to question on the broadband. I never got a phone call.
Okay.
Um. I have their phone numbers in my phone and anybody that knows, knows me, if they call my phone.
Right.
And I don't have your number saved.
Right.
It ain't gonna go through.
Yeah.
You know, I have an app on there.
Okay.
If it ain't saved on the phone, I ain't gonna get it.
Right.
Period. You guys can find me.
You're gonna have to show me that app, cause I'm sick of these telemarketers, man.
Yeah, I'll 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 show you after.
They start talking in Spanish as soon as I get on there.
It's like fourteen bucks a year or something.
Oh, yeah, okay. So you're basically saying that K J S never reached out to you?
Yeah, I never reached out, but but I did reach out to to K J S, you know, so hey, if you guys wanna sit down. And I'm only one man.
Right.
We got other people up here.
Sure.
That has to vote on this stuff.
Right.
You know, my envision or my vision for for broadband, uh, and I guess we can just go ahead and talk it on here.
Yeah.
Talk about, um, so if you look at Henderson County.
Okay.
What was the other county, San Augustine?
I think so.
Or Sabine. Yeah, Sabine. If you look at the different counties, and the reason I mention those, cause those are fairly local.
Yeah.
Yeah, they're within two hour drive. Uh, if you're gonna go ask for money.
Right.
Doesn't matter if you're going to the bank, the federal government.
Right.
To your mama and daddy.
Yeah.
Or your brother, whoever. Are you just gonna go ask them for money? Are you gonna at least write down on a piece of paper what your plans are, how much it's gonna cost, um, what terms uh are you looking at?
Right.
And uh, you know, is it a loan, is it a grant, is it a gift?
Yeah.
You know, you can give someone ten thousand dollars a year as a gift and it's tax free.
That's what they say.
Yeah, so on a uh from the city side, if you're gonna go ask for grants, you can't just get on your hands and knees and go.
Yeah.
Plead for money.
Yeah, you gotta have a plan.
You gotta have a plan. And if you look at Sabine Henderson, and they had all the engineering and everything ready to go.
Right.
Okay, project was put on hold.
Mm-hmm.
I think Henderson County was like two years while they saw, or they seeked grants. And then they finally got approved and there's funds like R D O funds and things like that, but then they went in and just laid fiber, okay? Uh, Sabine County did the same thing.
Okay.
So, this, for the sake of the matter of just conversation here between you and I right now, let's say last year, and last year was a unique situation, cause anyone in construction can understand supply and demand and scheduling projects.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, let's say last year, we did get it approved.
Right.
Okay, my hope was the fact that all this money was coming down and I just got another email about more funds coming down from the state.
Right.
Is take the project, put it on hold for six months, eight months, okay?
Okay.
You know, I was in talks with people in Washington, D C and Austin.
Okay.
Saying, hey, what's the fastest route? And Jasper, for the sake of conversation, Jasper's always been on just good enough.
Yeah.
Just good enough.
Okay.
We've never been actually.
Good?
Good, but we've never been.
Poor.
Poor either.
Yeah.
We've all just been just good enough, but we we barely, if you, you know, look at it on a chart, Jasper is just right there on that line where we're okay.
Right.
But we're never doing great.
Right.
And, you know, people that lived here a long time, they understand that.
Right.
Uh, and you know, from a political side, when you're looking at oh, here's a good example, the federal government considers middle class to be what? Household income forty thousand dollars a year, you're considered middle class in the United States.
Uh, that ain't no, that ain't what Obama said.
Well, well, I know, but I'm just saying federal government standards though.
Right.
State.
Okay.
If you make, you know, forty or forty-five thousand dollars as a family.
Okay.
You're considered middle class, you know?
Yeah, good luck with that.
Good luck with that, I don't know, I don't, you know, you know, that's, that's a, that's a tough.
Yeah.
Thing to do.
Especially at the inflation rate that we're sitting at now.
Yeah, we, what are we sitting at now?
Or the quoted, the quoted.
Quoted inflation, you know, as funny as the C P I to calculate, inflation was changed in like nineteen eighty-two or nineteen eighty-one. Uh, so, so the inflation today doesn't calculate oil and gas products.
Nah.
It doesn't calculate things that, you know, it'll calculate food and housing. But some of the key items that we use every day, such as put gas in your car, doesn't calculate those items because they're, they're turbulent.
Gotcha.
So pre nineteen eighty-one, nineteen eighty-two, it included in it. So, in back in the seventies, it was what, fifteen percent inflation or something at one point?
I think so.
So, in that, in all technicality, if we use the old metric, we're probably sitting at twelve, fifteen percent right now. And we just don't realize it.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So going back to, going back to understanding kind of where the people are, or at least some of the people, let's say, and understanding where some of the narratives are, what's, what is your vision? What is your vision for running again?
My vision for running again is to go ahead and continue with, you know, a lot of the work that we've started. You know, I really wanna see through with the skate park, water park. Uh, there's some other things that are in the works that I don't wanna say anything right now.
Right.
Cause I don't want things to get out of control.
Right.
Okay.
You guys aren't trying to bring casino in?
No, no, not a, not a casino, uh, no strip clubs or anything like that, so. Um, but no, there's, there's some things that I would, especially with Rashad Lewis, I've been working with him a lot.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, engaging with DeMarcus Holmes some, uh, quite a bit, you know, just trying to figure out, you know, what's gonna be the next big focus, you know, is it gonna cost money, you know, what tax breaks can we do?
Right.
What things can we do long term? And it's gonna be really focused around the tech industry.
Okay.
You know, everyone's working remotely now.
Yeah.
You know, there's entire companies.
Sure, that's, that's exactly right.
You know, you have, uh, you have, you know, you have big companies like, uh, I'll just say big investment firms.
Yeah.
Uh, business management firms that have twenty thousand employees, where they're all going to remote.
Yeah.
You know, if you go up to Oregon, you go to Colorado.
Yeah.
Uh, one place is in Hood River, Oregon, uh, and and there's a lot of big manufacturing companies, they're saying, hey, you know what? Cities are becoming expensive, let's go to rural America.
Yeah.
So if you go, if you go to Hood River, Oregon, you know, one of the drones I used when I was in the military, I didn't know where they manufactured it, while I was in Hood River, Oregon, and a friend of mine lived up there. Well, he worked for Boeing and Boeing built this enormous facility.
Okay.
In the mountains, like two hours from Portland, Oregon. I mean, this isn't like in the middle of nowhere, this is a sawmill town.
Right, right.
I'm not talking about like a commercial sawmill, I'm talking about mom and pop sawmill town.
Gotcha.
You know, you can go, you can go eat at Pizza Shack and you can watch them cut wood while you're eating pizza.
Nice.
And uh, anyway, so so Boeing actually moved in, built an enormous facility. And and it was a tech-based facility.
Right.
Okay, a lot of programmers, a lot of engineers, and I think the facility had like five hundred employees. The town was only like twelve hundred people.
Okay.
So they actually had a bus transit system, all the little towns around it, all the way even into Portland. And if you wanna work for Boeing and make a hundred, two hundred thousand dollars a year, they would pick you up at your house in the morning with a company bus and drive you to the facility.
Wow.
And that that area boomed.
Okay.
You know, and all they're doing is building drones and and doing, and you know, it was a wooded area, they were testing the new camera systems out, thermals and lidar and things like that.
Right.
Uh, so big companies are looking at rural areas to move into.
Nice.
You know, they're looking at human capital, you know, what, what, what do the locals have to offer? You know, what expertise do we have? Uh, your software engineers, your your programmers, your cybersecurity guys. Uh, you know, the country lacks like forty thousand cybersecurity people, so why not give with a local college? And say, hey, you know what, we wanna be a, we wanna be a central location to train guys to be cybersecurity experts.
Yeah.
You know, what, what incentives are out there? The federal government has programs now and, you know, you could join up with the federal government, get funds and build facilities and have a central location.
Wow.
Um, and I've reached out to a few schools already.
Okay.
You know, there's been a couple of people that are interested, they're like, yeah, if you guys have a solid line, especially on fiber, dedicated fiber, and it goes straight to servers in Dallas and Houston as your main hub, and we can have a, you know, great connection.
Right.
We can come in and build our economic development, and we can set up a school there.
Right. Does it seem, does it seem like, you know, obviously there's rumblings of of broadband actually coming back on the agenda? In the future, and that being kind of a a partnership deal with a provider.
Yeah, so, you know, broadband, I don't like the term, but it just stuck with what it was.
Right, yeah.
It's a fiber project.
Yeah.
You know.
Well, that's just, that's how it's hillbillies.
Yeah, yeah, but you know, but back history on fiber, you know, they've been experimenting with fiber optics since like the fifties.
Yeah, no doubt.
And and what the capabilities of fiber, we don't even have the technologies to max, to maximize the usability of fiber.
Okay.
Okay, um, I'm gonna throw a number out there, cause I know it's relatively in that spectrum, but, you know, the world record for data transfer is on a fiber optic cable and it's like four hundred terabytes.
Wow.
We don't even have ca, we don't even have technology today that can handle four hundred terabytes worth of data being transferred.
Right, right.
We won't have that for a hundred years.
Okay.
And when you have a fiber optic with a lifespan of fifty years underground.
Yeah.
Too. It may seem expensive, but when you look at the long-term investment.
Yeah.
That's.
Well, fifty years, fifty years will help us bridge the gap between fiber and Elon Musk cooking us all up to the uh.
Well, well, yeah, a- and you know, even Elon came out and said, hey, this is not a all-in-one solution, this is to get people connected.
Right.
Uh, you know, you go to certain parts of the world, and even out in West Texas, there's no winner, there's no sell certain, nothing out there. So if you get, if you break down.
Yeah.
And you don't got a jug of water on you, good luck.
Yeah, you gotta wait for those satellites coming back around the globe.
Yeah, and uh, but, you know, it, and everyone talks about wireless and I guess I'm a little old school on on some things as far as computers too, because everyone talks about go get a wireless mouse. I don't like wireless.
Right.
Wireless is not reliable.
Right.
But if I know there's a wire plugged in here, it plugged in here, it's gonna work.
Right.
And if it don't work, something broke.
That's right, yeah.
So we're gonna change the cable out.
That's a good point.
But you know, wireless, uh, you know, with the different frequencies that are being used, you know, here in the United States, and I may be ignorant on this, but we really don't have a true five G in the United States.
Right.
You know, true.
Actually, the only true five G is in China.
Well, yeah, so a lot of your middle, middle eastern countries.
I forget what their city is, what city that was kind of their five G flagship city.
But if you look around and and you go over there to some of these countries that are using true five G, look around, you see any birds?
See any bees?
You see any bees? You don't, you don't.
No pests.
Everything's just, whether it was from the five G or not. But they were there yesterday. Now they have five G now.
I don't, I don't know, I don't know how well that's gonna, gonna go over here.
Yeah, I mean, you know.
I mean, cause honest to God, I mean, they, they use five G and I ain't trying to get off on some Q and on stuff, but they use five G as a weapon.
Yeah, yeah, well, you know, when I was in the military, uh I told some of this story the other day, cause they, they didn't believe me. Uh when I was, when I was in the military, I never volunteered for anything. If they, if they said, hey, we need a volunteer, I take one step back and get in the middle of the pack. Cause they know a volunteer, they just talked like the front ten people that were there. And we're out in the desert and they said, okay, you guys come with us, we're out twenty-nine palms out of California. And I was uh, saying, man, something's fishy here. And uh they said, okay, you ten guys go run out of the desert that way. They had, they had pulled this Humvee and it had like this big satellite dish looking thing. And man, those guys are running and uh the guy in the Humvee hit a switch. And it dropped in a heartbeat. And we're like, what's going on? It was this new crowd control device. And what it does is it, it doesn't do any damage to you, but it boils your molecules in your skin. So it makes you feel like you're on fire. Doesn't do any damage to you, unless it's there and you leave it on for a long period.
Yeah, which, who's to say when the switch gets cut up, cut off, right? You know, it's kinda crazy that before all of this COVID stuff and before all of this, all of this pandemic, we'll call it. Before all this came out, you know, there was, there was a few riots in China. All that stuff stopped. Quick, fast and in a hurry. Crowd control, so I mean, you know, to me, I don't know, I don't wanna jump off on conspiracy theory, cause that's not what we're talking about.
We can be here for days.
But at the same time, I mean, it, it is, it is a prove, it's provable information that five G's been used for, for a weapon. You know, as, as a weapon against people. So to me, I don't know, man, I think far as Jasper's concerned, you know. Obviously, um the election, when is, when's the, uh, when's the actual voting?
Election day is what, May fifth, then there's other votings kicking off here. Middle of April. I gotta go verify the dates.
Gotcha. What, uh, i- is there any, is there any last statements that you wanna make to the people in Jasper who? Maybe you're still kinda on the fence even after this interview?
Yeah, uh, you know, I always encourage people to vote, you know, who they wanna vote for. You know, whether it's a, if it's a left or right thing for you, I think that's cool. But you know, what are, whoever's gonna bring the best value. For the time of the position. You know, so you know, if you want the youth to stand up and start taking over, great. And you know, you got a guy, let's say, you know, I'm, I, I think I'm younger than Ronnie, say upon, I sorta know who he is, but I don't, I've never met him.
I, I, I think that'd be a fair assessment.
And uh, but you know, if, you know, vote for, vote for who you want, you know, I'm here. I love Jasper, I wanna see it grow. Uh you know, there's, there's different things that I talk about and you know, I talked to you about it before, social capital and civic engagement. You know, there seems to be uh one of the top things for economic uh. Small towns necessarily don't need economic growth to be a good place to live and have the quality of life. You know, but if you have the social engagement in that civic duty mindset and everyone in town. Puts forth the effort to make it a great place to live and raise your children, you know, that's where we need to go. If we can't grow as a town, because rural America is dying. Across the entire United States, you know, but, but that being said, on the other spectrum. The economic stability is where you get your social capital engagements from, you know, people just like in church.
Makes sense.
So, yeah, vote for he you want, uh I don't think I'm the devil. If I am, then maybe, maybe I need to go look in the mirror. But I want, I want what's best for Jasper and yeah, there's been accusations, my life is chaotic to the viewpoint of some. Uh but it's just normal for me, I mean, just my situation, so. You know, take it, take it or leave it, uh but I'll be here and I always encourage people to reach out to me.
How could they do that?
So if you wanna reach out to me, have a conversation, we can go grab dinner, coffee, I'll buy. You know, if, if you, if you have something that you're really concerned about, come talk to me. Uh you can get on, you can come up to the city hall, they have my information, uh they also have my address. If you need it. Uh just swing by the house, I'll be there, uh you know, working on the house quite a bit. Even if I'm not out of town, you know, if, if I'm not out of town, I'm at the house working. So swing by the house. And uh, you know, we go from there, we sit down and have a good conversation.
Easy enough, that's all you can do.
Yeah, yeah, you know, and, and there's, if you wanna get on KJS or whatever, blast, hey, good, I'll see you on Facebook.
Ladies and gentlemen, you've been listening to Not on the Payroll, right here at notonthepayroll.com. Check us out at Facebook, check us out at YouTube, check us out at Rumble and now on Twitter. For all you people out there in the community, we appreciate you guys for listening and continue to do good work, man. That's what this thing is all about. We all come together and make this community.